Good evening, I'd like to start this town council special meeting. Could we all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, announcements. The town hall offices will be closed on Monday, September 7th for the observance of Labor Day holiday. Thursday, September 10th, in this room is the regular council meeting. And then again on Thursday, September 24th, again in this room is another regular council meeting. Okay, this is a special meeting, and it's related to two items that we wanted to be able to discuss and do some action on in a timely manner. All of it has to do with the Kinder Morgan pipeline. The first one, first topic, has to do with the survey agreement issues that we've been dealing with. And the second one has to do with the alternate route that's been proposed by Kinder Morgan, known as the Amherst route. Let me make it clear at this point that the Amherst route, we are not taking a position for or against. You will see that we are identifying issues that are a concern of us related to that route. We have already placed on the website and have here copies that the audience can be looking at as well, the specific drafts that have been established related to those two issues. And we're going to be talking about them in that order. In terms of public input, what I'm going, my plan is, we're going to introduce the letter. For example, when we're talking about the survey agreement, we're going to introduce the proposed letter, the draft. Then we're going to be talking about the actual access agreement that has been drafted. We're going to talk about that. We're also going to be talking about the timeline that was included that got us to this point. And then I'm going to open it up to public comment. After the public comment is stopped, then I will entertain motions, okay? And I'll follow the same process when we talk about the alternate route discussion, okay? Any questions from the council or any other suggestions that should be different? No, okay. So, if I were to read all of the documents, we would be here for nine o'clock. So bear with me as I attempt to summarize the major issues related to all of that document, all the documents I talked about. Okay, first of all, I have little crib notes here for myself. The survey access agreement discussion. Just to be able to introduce this, since March of this year, this council has attempted to negotiate an access agreement to allow Kinder Morgan to access town-owned property for surveying purposes. It's probably important to note at this point, included in the paperwork is a timeline that reflects the multiple times we've had contact or attempted to have contact with Kinder Morgan related to this, our attempt to be able to have it completed. It does not include personally, my last discussion, myself, with a Kinder Morgan representative last Friday. And I, at that point, verbalized my frustration and the frustration of the council. We have been doing this all in good faith, and it is clear that that has not been reciprocated. And I told them that this meeting was going to occur, and they need not be here, but they should, you know, they can know that it's going to happen. So, this letter reflects that frustration. Okay. Again, I'm not going to read the whole thing. I think it is clearly reflects all of our attempts. Go ahead, Eileen, go right ahead.
And it's always been one major issue.
Thank you. The one major issue, and it's been talked about before in public, is our insistence that a town representative be available, be made, not available, be present when those surveys are done. And they've consistently said no. And we are intransigent on that. And that's probably going to be part of our discussion this evening. So what I would like to do is open up the discussion to the council related to first, the letter, after we've established whatever we want to do with that. Again, the motion to do anything with it is going to occur after the public comment, so keep that in mind. And then we can turn to the actual access agreement, okay? So I'm going to open the floor for the letter part to the council first. The council has had the draft, so we've had plenty of time to review it. Yes, Jody.
Nancy, I'm happy with the letter. I think it states all of our, well, my concerns, I won't speak for everyone else clearly. But I just wanted to point out that one comment for anybody, I would encourage you to go to the website and read the letter because it's pretty inclusive. But one of the points made was the fact that they were unlawfully on our property. And we make sure to point that out to FERC in this letter. I think that's really important, that they're refusing to negotiate with us, but yet they were unlawfully on our property, and we called them out on it. And if they're found to be unlawfully on our property, again, we will call the police again. So I think that's a really important point of this letter, in addition to all the other hoopla that we've gone through trying to get a negotiated survey. Thank you.
Very good point. Bill?
And the other point that I would make, Madam Chair, is that when we went to the FERC scoping meeting, that it was Mr. Tomasi that encouraged the abutters to engage and allow surveyers on, to their property, to better amplify what was on that person's property so that they'd have a better understanding as to what the, you know, what the pipeline surveys will be looking at. And the fact that we've engaged in that particular process as well, and we've been rebuffed, for the lack of a better word, you know, all these things to illustrate the fact, the reticence that we've, 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 reticence is probably the wrong word, but it, it's indicative of the unwillingness of TGP and Kinder Morgan to engage us and, you know, meet us halfway so that they can do their, do what they need to do, and also give us the assurances that we need regarding our town properties. So I'm happy with the letter, it's a good letter. Thank you.
Anyone else? No, go ahead. Dan?
I would just echo Jody's comment that behind the letter, it was done very well. I think our non-meeting of the night, we were able to put together this thing in a pretty timely manner, so very happy with everything that was presented. And thank you, Tom, Eileen, Paul, everybody, Jody, for your input, all this information that had been passing on. If one thing, any town residents have any doubts, a lot of work went into this in preparation time, and I appreciate management, as I like to call you guys, for doing a nice job.
How about you?
I'm not management. So, thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, if there's no further discussion about the letter, can we move on to the access agreement? Again, as I already mentioned, the major tipping point has to do with the requirement that a town representative would be present. Just to clarify something, you're going to see a whole section at the very end that's crossed out, that was literally just a formatting issue. If you look at the previous paragraph, it's exactly the same. It was just repeated accidentally. And, yeah. The other thing they had a little problem with too, is they wanted to be able to have eight representatives, and we said no, no more than four. Okay? So, open for discussion on the council for the access agreement. Yes, Dan?
I'd just like to go on the record as stating from the very beginning, I was advising our town people that agreeing to surveys were in your interest. So I wanted it to be clear that at no time have I ever weighed from that stand, and I stick with this point to this day. And it's one of the reasons why I'm very disappointed in KM for not doing it in a more timely fashion, to have us string along for six months over something from everything that I had done my research on, with something that that was one of the first blocks that they needed to cross in order to get the process going. So to sit six months later and not have it done is rather embarrassing. So unfortunately, it didn't work out, and through no efforts of our town council and the consensus of everyone here at the time. So I want to be on the record for saying that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? None, okay. The timeline is the timeline, so I don't think it's a matter of discussion on that. Okay.
Just to be sure to add your...
Yeah, I'll add a little statement from Friday.
Your most recent phone conversation with them, because I think that's important. Thanks, Nancy.
And Joanna, yesterday and today also.
Ah, okay. So we'll have to do that by tomorrow morning. Okay, I will open up for public comment, again, related only to the survey agreement letter and paperwork. Okay, seeing none, I would be happy to take a motion.
Madam Chair, I would move that the town council authorize the town manager, Eileen Cabanel, to affix her signature to a letter dated September 4th, 2015, regarding access by Tennessee Gas Pipeline Company LLC to property in the town of Merrimack, New Hampshire for environmental surveys for the Northeast Energy Direct Project.
Second.
Okay, any discussion about that?
And just to clarify, just to clarify the motion, just to make sure that we are including the proposed agreement and the timeline with this particular letter, is that my understanding?
I was going to take that separately. The letter first, do the motion, then a motion related to the access agreement, if that's okay? Okay.
Sure.
So the letter will be first. I know they're interconnected, clearly. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Seven zero zero. Okay, now, the actual access agreement.
Move to authorize the inclusion of the access agreement.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
And for the town manager to sign on behalf of the council.
Do we want to, excuse me, Madam Chair, do we want to make a point that this is the last negotiation?
That's just what I was going to say.
On the contract that we intend to do, that we've gone back and forth, as you described, and we've pretty much gone back to our starting point, and we're offering this as a final...
Take it or leave it.
Take it or leave it.
Take it or leave it.
And sending this along with the letter to the, to FERC will just kind of solidify our whole position on the thing, and be our, be our final...
Second. I would concur to seven one. Eileen?
I think it would be good to have my signature, and then a space for Kinder Morgan hauntingly blank.
Hauntingly. Okay, so...
On the agreement?
Yes.
Okay, so right now...
It's a good offer.
Okay, because it does have a place for Tennessee Gas Line Pipeline to sign. Okay. So we will sign it, send it along, take it or leave, and it's their decision at this point. Okay. Right. Okay, seeing no further discussion, Jody?
Thank you, Nancy. I just, I wanted to go on record, I think, thank you, Tom, for bringing up process. It's like we have all this information in our head, and things that we wanted to be sure to share with everybody tonight, to know how we arrived here, and there's just so much that sometimes we forget. And we did talk about how this is going to be a take it or leave it offer, we're done negotiating. And then we also talked about how we would assure the public, should Kinder Morgan sign this agreement, which I'm personally not accepting, we'll be sure to make sure that the public is aware that we've got a signed agreement. I just wanted to speak personally, I've stated all along that I didn't think that we should allow Kinder Morgan to survey our property. I know I've gone on record believing that, and I certainly, I've talked in the past repeatedly about how there are two different legal opinions on this, and how no one's right and no one's wrong. And basically, I think we're all just trying to do the best and the right thing to protect our town property and the people that live here. While I really am not interested in having Kinder Morgan, especially with the way they operate, on our town property at any point in time, since I've been elected to the town council and I've been part of this process, I've watched this entire survey agreement process unfold. And I told Nancy the other day, when we were at the scoping meeting, and the entire town council stood up there together, and I stood, I was there until after midnight, I listened to all the comments, and I watched the FERC representatives and how they responded to our comments, and when they rolled their eyes, and when he was on his cellphone texting and everything else. One comment that I noticed that really got Eric Tomasi's attention was when Nancy told him about Kinder Morgan's, basically what I consider bad faith negotiations, and how they're refusing, I mean, basically what happens is we send them this document, they agree to something, then they send it back to us, we send it back again, then they change something that they agreed to previously. So I mean, it's, it's just a dog and pony show. But when Nancy mentioned to Eric Tomasi, to the FERC representatives, that we had gone through this process, explained what we'd gone through, and then stated to him that Kinder Morgan is not accepting of the fact that we are insistent that town representatives accompany them on our property, I mean, there was a collective gasp from the people there. I saw him take notice, I saw him actually write notes as Nancy was speaking. So to me, that was impactful. So I'm not knowing what really the right or the wrong way, and I don't think there is a right or a wrong way, and I really hate to be divided as a town on this issue. I think it's going to be a matter of opinion, and I respect everyone's personal opinions. But I possibly think that this timeline and this process in which they basically dug their heels in and blown us off, so to speak, I think that speaks volumes to FERC. So while I didn't believe we should allow them to survey to begin with, I see that us allowing them to survey, or being agreeable to it, has brought us to this place where we have all this information about how they operate and what they're doing to the town of Merrimack. So because of that, I'm going to vote in support of this survey agreement moving forward, and having Eileen have the authority to sign it, because I also want to support the town council and their actions, because I agree with the angle that they're coming from at this point. And I just wanted people to know, I'm not like Dan, I haven't had one position all along, I'm actually kind of changing my mind. But, you know, it won't be the first time in my, you know, political career that I've done that. But I just don't want anybody to say that you're right and you're wrong, or I'm right and you're wrong, because I don't believe that's the case. But I've actually kind of come around on this. So anyway, long-winded, I apologize, but that's my thought process on this. Thank you, Nancy.
I have generally categorized this whole process as a sense of disrespect from Kinder Morgan to the town, to this council. And it, you know, we sensed it, the more it went on, the more we felt it. But I think we're all at the point of saying enough is enough, no more disrespect. Tom?
Yeah, I think that we handed them the perfect opportunity to walk the talk, and they turned around and walked away. You know, here was an opportunity for them to demonstrate to the people involved in this process that they were willing to work with us and to deal with us, and in an open and effective manner. And instead, we have five or six exchanges of agreements, the same language, and every time they turn around, they would change something else every time. When finally they sent the last thing last week, I just characterized it to my colleagues as this is bad faith bargaining, period. And that's when it started the whole ball rolling, I'm trying to get this letter together, and finally putting it into this whole thing, because, you know, we're spending hundreds of dollars an hour with our attorney...
We've spent thousands of dollars on the negotiations.
To deal with this. And she was just as frustrated in dealing with them, maybe more so because she was trying to deal with them directly. And they were talking out of both sides of their mouth, essentially. So, you know, here they had the opportunity to look good, and instead, they looked like something else.
Eileen?
Eileen? I just, we just realized that page number two of this document isn't here. So Paul is making a copy of it. The reason why I noticed is because we had added the part about how they should conduct themselves while working on town rights, road rights of way, that they shouldn't be on anybody's lawns, or they shouldn't be on, over anyone's fences, or...
Yes, not, yeah.
So that was something that we added as well, having to do with that. So Paul's going down and making a bunch of copies of that, and making sure that we have it, and apologizes to everybody, we're just kind of trying to put this together at the last minute.
Yeah, it says, just, I do have a copy of two, yeah. No.
From Tuesday night, I do.
Well, I printed it out, I printed it out just before I came here.
Okay.
The section, "With regard to the public roads and ways described above," and it talks about the paragraph where it was identified, "The town does not grant TGP access rights to areas beyond the visible road or way, whether paved or gravel. The town expressly withholds consent to TGP access, which includes passage beyond a fence or other barrier, or onto a lawn, or beyond any other visible demarcation of the road or way, even where the area is within the property." So we're not allowing them to go over someone's fence, or...
Or stone wall.
Or stone wall.
Or their lawn.
Or their lawn. Okay. So we'll obviously make sure, but that is the area that we talked about.
Paul's making copies, and he's going to bring them right up.
Okay. And we did change, obviously, the agreement from August, I think we've changed that June, then July, then August, and now it's September. But this would be the last time we have to change the month.
Started out with April.
Right. Okay, so I don't think we have to wait, right? We'll just make sure that copy is, as long as the public knows what it is. Okay, okay, we have a, I'm sorry, who did the motion?
I did.
Tom Mahan, and who seconded, was it Bill? Okay. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Now, is it our intent that this will go to our, in addition to FERC, it will go to our congressional delegation?
I would like a motion to that effect.
So move. Seconded.
Okay, so our New Hampshire delegation by Tom Mahan, seconded by Bill Boyd, that all of this, all of the documents should be sent to all of the delegation.
Governor.
Governor.
And Congressman Genta.
Okay. And our reps as well. Okay, okay. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Terrific. Thank you, Tom. Okay, let's move on to the, where's my notes? The alternate route comments to FERC docket. Again, this has a letter to it, and I'm just going to try to highlight, it is, what, two pages long? Actually, it's two pages, okay, three pages. And there's also an addendum added. Basically, this again, does not take a position of for or against, it's to highlight those concerns that we have related to the proposed project, the proposed route. Just to highlight, we make a point of saying that this alternate route runs within 650 feet of the Thornton Ferry Elementary School, and I have called the chair of the school committee to make sure that they know that that's included. The Amherst route alternatives runs within 200, 300 feet of several large residential area neighbors, including Woody Place, Kansogen Acres, additional neighborhoods in Continental Boulevard, like Tinker Road, Nattaker Road, they will be impacted. Hospice, hospice facility off Continental Boulevard is within a few hundred feet of this alternative. General statement related to impacting commercial properties along the way, and this impact is likely negative, related to the value, the value of commercial properties, thereby decrease, possibly decreasing employment opportunities and tax revenue. Talks about conservation, conservation commission property. Again, number six goes into a little bit more about the habitats related to those properties. Number seven, the same, a continuation of identifying vernal pools, wetland, also different species. And the conservation commission has already submitted a vast amount of information related to this, to the previous one. All that, a lot of that's still true, this is additional information, and I believe there's going to be more. At least talking to Tim, who's the chair of the conservation, he indicated there's going to be additional information submitted as well. Number eight really has to do with identifying issues related to the Merrimack Village District. At this point, I will highlight that there is a letter from the groundwater investigations consultant that the MVD has hired, and it's a full letter related to their concerns, major concerns, of going through that aquifer down by Pennechuck. Again, not only the aquifer on Continental Boulevard, an industrial, non-industrial Continental, but now in addition, there's an additional wellhead protection area that they have concerned. And that's a significant and a very important as well addition to that letter. So that's, and we do say that there is a additional comment attached. Number nine, basically identifies that the pipeline directly accesses numerous properties owned by Pennechuck. And then we respectfully request that the commission require TGP to consider and address these, and all other issues associated with the Amherst alternative, as part of its next data request, in order to ensure a full and fair consideration of alternatives in the commission's scoping process. Again, this was really important to be able to get this in by tomorrow, because that requires them, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, requires them to address all of these issues specifically in their next resource report. We could have done it later, but then that would have been, they could have waited until the next one. We wanted to be able to get in to force them to respond now. Okay? So I will open it up for discussion in the council. Yes, Bill?
Madam Chair, question regarding the Emory Garrett letter. It's missing a signature, which indicates to me, is there a page two to this document? Because if there is, I don't have one.
No.
So we received...
This is just from the consultant.
So we received, we received something from Emory Garrett that lacks the signature of the author of this particular letter.
Correct, but it's representatives of the company.
And that's what I was going to say, I agree with Bill, I think it should have a signature.
A signature?
I would like a signature, because I'm, if we're going to give weight to this particular document, and I certainly value the time that Emory Garrett, Emory and Garrett gave us on Tuesday night, I think even if there's just a page two that says very truly yours, you know, Jamie Emory on the back of it, you know, hydrologist, whatever his title is, I, I have no problem, I mean, that could be signed in PDF and sent over.
I'm not sure if the public heard you, Paul.
I can run downstairs right now, I know I got a PDF from the Merrimack Village District after this was printed from the superintendent.
Okay, so you can double check?
So I'll double check that right now.
Perfect, perfect. And what, what they're saying is that they would like a signature to be there.
They're not going to get one, because they're all out of, they're all out of town, except the lawn, so I...
No, this is a signature from Emory Garrett.
Right, but they're out of town.
Oh, okay. I'll do my best.
It shouldn't be that difficult.
I'll do my best.
I guess my comment is, if it's not, okay, I believe that Eileen will do her best to get the signature. If not, can we agree we shouldn't hold it up then?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I mean...
Yes, we can agree.
Yes, we can agree that we shouldn't hold it up.
Okay, but we'll...
Thank you, Tom. I apologize.
We'll do our best to get that signature.
Exactly.
Okay. Any other?
Sorry, what exclamation point it really is.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. No, I, I'm fine with that too.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Yes, Tom?
I just want to reiterate, what you've kind of indicated a couple of times today, and we've all been indicating and sharing amongst ourselves, is how this Amherst alternative, so to speak, that we're talking about, took a bad situation of a pipeline going through Merrimack, through aquifers and things like that, and proposed a worse situation. So they didn't go from one to a better, or from an okay one to a worse one, they went from a bad one to an even worse one. So it's very difficult to even imagine that someone could say, well, if you don't like that one, I guess you like the other one better. No, neither of them is any good. And according to Emory Garrett, and I believe Jamie Emory very much, it's, it's a travesty to think about going through the aquifers with a gas line that could conceivably be turned into an oil line, and the damage that that could do to wipe out our... could do to wipe out our aquifers completely and have Merrimack without 88% of its water supply, should it, should an accident occur. Not that we expect one to happen, but that, that's always an opportunity that, we just can't afford to risk.
Right. And I know there's been some discussion that we should make a judgment related to this, either pro or con, or, okay, let's put it this way, to even talk to them about a possibility of an alternative agreement. And again, like Jody said earlier, there's pros and cons to that, but my feeling is, responding in any kind is giving them credence or giving them an out, that are sitting down, and that's what was requested by KM on Friday, well, can we sit down like you did in Amherst? And I said, "No." That is not the wish of the council, that's been very clear. We are against the pipeline, period, any shape or form. Now, our responsibility, however, is to, when they come up with options, to be able to identify those specific issues related to that option. That's more important to me than a for or against. So that's just my personal. Yes, Tom?
How ironic, in light of their intransigence on the access agreement. You know, to ask us to talk about these things, and for us to have to prepare this stuff to tell them where the, where the, all the issues are on the property.
You implying one way, is that what you're implying?
No, I, I'm stating it. Okay? The other thing you have to understand about the Amherst process is this, this was not an arms-length process between Kinder Morgan and the town of Amherst, even though they would like you to believe that this is Kinder Morgan's, they had three alternatives that, that they put together. But Kinder Morgan went out of their way at that meeting they had, when they were presented to emphasize and to thank the town and the pipeline committee for their cooperation and for their assistance in allowing them to put these, these alternates together. So it's not all as arms-length as you would like it. And there was even one comment at the table at a previous meeting, when they asked about alternatives and the individual, the gentleman said, "No, no, that's your job," you know, "to do that," you know, and, you know, so that Kinder Morgan could be the bad guy, not the, not the Amherst Board of Selectment or the Amherst Pipeline Committee. So, you know, it's, you know, they're, they're doing what they feel they need to do in their own behalf, however, their vision ends at the town line. And they're impacting two other towns, and a couple of aquifers, three wells, and a whole bunch of other sensitive properties along the way.
And schools and...
And school, you know, and...
Neighbors.
And those were brought to their attention in the early discussions about these, about, about that, about that, taking that route, and, you know, that's, that's where their, that's where their vision ends. It's like you go to the end of the building, but you don't look around the corner to see what's coming. And so you can't see ahead, and you can't see what's coming on, they just get to their end, the end of their, the end of the, the town line, and that's it. So, that's why we feel compelled that we have to take this, this approach with regard to the, to this particular issue.
Eileen?
I apologize for going back and forth, but I was just talking to Gina about something that she wanted to comment on, and I think we missed the public comment period.
No, we haven't finished, right.
We haven't finished having our individual discussion related to the letter.
That's okay. Did you wanna say, Jody?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out to people, there, there's a lot of game playing going on, there's a lot of sidebar conversations, and, you know, if the three-page timeline of Kinder Morgan going back and forth and not cooperating with us regarding the survey agreement, isn't proof enough of the kind of games they're playing? What Kinder Morgan, when they say they wanna sit down with us and talk about us proposing an alternate route, and they want us to do that, so that, my opinion, our necks are on the line, we hold the liability as a town body. What they're talking about is they're talking about a meeting with no cameras, no microphones, possibly, you know, I think they'd love it if there was no public participation, the same way that Amherst did. So that's what they're talking about when they say they wanna sit down with us and talk about it. And from day one, before I was even on the council, the council's made it perfectly clear that they have no intention of having conversations with Kinder Morgan in private, that everything's going to be done publicly. And Chairman Harrington has extended an invitation to Kinder Morgan on more than one occasion, "If you want to discuss alternate routes through Merrimack, come to our meeting, get on our agenda, we'll have that conversation, but we'll have it in public." So what Kinder Morgan is doing is they're getting individual townspeople on the phone, and Kinder Morgan representatives are telling them that, you know, "Your town council isn't working with us, your town government isn't cooperating with us, you need to have your town council work with us and cooperate with us," which I think they've got a lot of gall saying that after what we've talked about with the survey agreement. So anyway, it's just more of the game playing, but just so the people know that, that's what they, what they mean. They want us to sit down behind closed doors, without any tape recorders or TV cameras, and talk about something like that, and, and I'm, for one, happy that the rest of the council agrees with me that that's not how we're gonna do business. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, open to the public, comments.
Hi, Gina Rosati, 15 Dunbarton. On the, this letter, down on number two, on the fourth line down, you're talking about Tinker Road neighborhood to the east and a large condominium development to the west. That must've come from an older map, because that condominium development was actually, was supposed to be condos in the eighties, and then the real estate bust happened, so then what happened was Mrs. Hilton sold that land to Etchedown Properties, who turned it into my neighborhood, which is why I know about this.
Yeah, now, okay, yeah, I should've caught that myself.
No, that's okay, that's okay. So actually, if you wanna give that a name, it's Castleton Ridge. And I'm not sure if you guys...
How do you spell?
It's C.A.S.T.L.E.T.O.N. Ridge, R.I.D.G.E.
Ridge Neighborhood.
And I'm not sure if you also wanna, 'cause Cambridge Drive is right near there, too.
Right, it comes right out.
Yeah.
That's not part of...
Well, Ca- Cambridge Drive is, is down past the Thornton's Ferry, so I'm not sure is the Amherst alternative gonna go by?
Okay, what we could do is say, Tinker Road, Cambridge... Do you know if it's street?
What's Cambridge?
Drive? Is it Cambridge Drive? Hold on a second.
Carol DePiero, 10 Cambridge Drive?
Drive, okay, there you go. That answers that. So, and I'll let you continue, but, Tinker Road and Cambridge Drive neighborhood to the east, and Carlton... Carlton Ridge neighborhood.
Castleton.
Castleton, thank you. Okay, Ga- you wanna finish yours, are you done, or?
Well, Castleton Court is in back of Thornton's Ferry, so I'm not sure if you, I mean, there's just so many neighborhoods in that whole area, but, I mean, those are, you're hitting the developments there, if you talk about Castleton Ridge, you talk about the Tinker, Tinker Road neighborhood.
Tinker Road, Cambridge Drive, thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, and Cambridge Drive.
We don't even have to say to the east and west. We can say Tinker Road, Cambridge Street, and Castleton Ridge neighborhoods.
Thank you.
That works.
Thank you. Come right up. Thanks for correcting me.
No, no problem. For one thing, I know, I know about this proposed route, but I'm not sure which side of the road we're talking about on Continental.
It moves, it moves.
I know.
It goes down the, what I will call the east side of Continental Boulevard. It sort of worms its way through the intersection at Continental and Route 101A, and then it runs down east, the east side, or the, the Pennechuck Square side of the road. So it's not a perfect directional thing, but...
And then it crosses over.
And then it runs all the way down to, past Industrial Drive, and it crosses over to the other side of the highway.
With the Marquette side.
In front of 40 Continental Boulevard, and then runs down to the...
Power lines.
EverSource power lines.
So...
And it makes a...
Are you talking about on the same side as Fidelity?
Yes.
Okay. So directly across the street from that is what, our formal name is Weathersfield, and that is Cambridge Drive. That is an additional 41 houses with common land, in addition to the neighborhoods you're already identifying.
Yeah, well, that's Kinder Morgan's problem, to identify how many guys are over there, 'cause they've gotta notify the owners. And they haven't done that yet, because this hasn't been...
Right, I realize that.
They haven't proposed this, okay?
But because you called out Whittier Place, I wasn't sure if we were calling out others.
So you're requesting that...
Or we give them an additional head count, rough, an estimate?
No, we can't.
We don't have the time?
But...
Go ahead, right ahead.
Neighborhood that we might put in here, just...
Weathersfield.
Weathersfield?
Weathersfield, Withersfield.
Wither?
Weather.
So we could add that to Whittier Place, Camp Sargent, and Weathersfield.
And that's an additional 41 houses.
That's reasonable.
And we're right next to the school.
Acres. Yeah, we don't need to have estates.
I was unsure when I gave it to her.
I think, would like to think it's estates, but it's not.
Well, it's not.
The other thing I, I think you're referring to, am I allowed to continue on to something?
Absolutely, go right ahead.
In point number four...
Yep.
When you say decreasing employment opportunities, are we talking about, I mean, I drive out of there every morning, there is a ton of fidelity traffic coming down that way. Is that what you're referring to, about decreasing deployment?
All of it.
Up unemployment?
All of it, Marquette, anything that's along that way.
Okay.
Including down by Pennechuck. Including by, down by that Pennechuck Square.
I've been, I'm sorry, I've been getting ready, all this stuff about the metering station, and then this came up, so...
Yeah, we're having a section on September 10th that's on the agenda.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol.
Those are good corrections, thank you. You can lift that up, here you go.
Good evening. Dennis Farrell, 24 Whittier Road, live in Whittier Place, obviously. And I thought I heard Ms. Harrington say a little while ago, that the town council is against the pipeline, period.
Period.
Does FERC know that?
Oh, yeah.
Has anybody, has the town written to FERC explaining that?
Well-known, publicly known.
Okay, that's good.
From the very beginning.
Because one of the things that I noticed in this letter, on point number two, where it talks about the Amherst alternative, and it mentions Whittier Place, and I don't know if the same applies to Camp Sargent Acres or Camp Sargent Estates, but even the regular route affects Whittier Place.
We've already submitted that. We've already submitted data that talks about resources, and we've already mentioned that. The original, one that goes through Huasheel Nature Preserve?
Right.
We've already submitted testimony or documents to FERC related to that, and Whittier is on that.
Okay. All right, I, yeah, and that's fine, I, I was just concerned, I mean, I can certainly support the town writing a letter mentioning, you know, Huasheel Preserve, the aquifers, all that stuff that impacts the town in general, not just those of us living near the, you know, near the pipeline, if it goes in.
Right.
But sometimes I felt, and, and, you know, you've, you've helped me understand a little bit better, I felt like maybe the neighborhoods were getting, you know, like the ugly stepchild, you know, and, and to me, it felt like the outlet mall all over again. If you don't live near it, you don't care about it.
I understand.
You know? And you, you went through that, obviously.
Yeah, but I can, at least my understanding, and people can talk amongst themselves or have other opinions.
Yeah.
I have always felt from day one, Whittier has always been on the agenda, top on the agenda.
Yeah.
As well as the water, and that has been documented in everything that we've done.
Right.
So, in my opinion, I believe we've, we've really done a good job with that.
Okay.
Representing you and the neighborhood.
Appreciate that, yeah, I think Mr. Boyd wants to make a comment.
I was just gonna edify the point that we've posted all this...
Maybe I should be the chairperson right now.
I was just gonna point out that all this information is posted on our town website, MerrimackNH.gov. It's a specific link to Kinder Morgan, that's on there, and you'll find everything that we've done from the onset of this whole process.
Yeah, because I, because I know letters that went from other towns like Amherst and Brookline, and, you know, they mention residential neighborhood impact, blah, blah, blah. So as long as they know. The other thing you said about FERC, about the guy taking notice, you know, when you mentioned the fact that, that Kinder Morgan didn't want town people with them, I, I think you're right, but, and I'm not trying to be a naysayer, but I work with the federal government every day in what I do. And some, and, and I did go to the meeting that was held at the TERRA, or used to be the TERRA.
Yeah.
When you all got up and everybody made their comments, and I think I heard a lot of people say, "Gee, it seems like they really care, it seems like the people from FERC really care." Again, I don't wanna sound overly skeptical, but sometimes, to me, this is just another tick box on what they have to do.
Right, they have to do.
You know? Okay, we did a time, we did a meeting, check, we heard the people, check, you know, and it's kinda like...
We had to do.
We, you know, we, okay, we did everything on our, on our tick list here, and, you know, it may matter, it may not matter. So I hope you're right, I hope, I hope that did resonate somehow.
Well, I think one of the advantages was, we were one of the earlier ones.
That's true.
So he wasn't worn out listening to so many people. And I think he's the one who initiated the discussion about how important the surveys were, and talked about all that, and so it's like, it just peaked in my mind, "Oh, you think that's important? Well, listen to this."
Yeah.
So I think those two combinations, he just, he could pay attention, he hadn't been worn out yet.
Right. Okay, thank you for your time.
You're very welcome. Hi.
I'm Kim Dinsmore, 4 Whittier Road. I just, I'm not even sure whether this would be beneficial or not, but as you discuss all the neighborhoods along this proposed route, you're saying that they will be impacted. Is it worthwhile defining how they would be impacted, whether it be from the safety angle, or, you, you mentioned how the property taxes will be decreased to the commercial properties, but, you know, I, I feel that our residential properties will also be decreased in value as well, which is a source of income to the town.
I think that has previously been documented. I don't, I see your point, however. Perhaps we could add one sentence, saying, "As previously documented, there are different kind of impacts," I'm not sure I...
Yeah, I, I don't wanna dummy down the, the voice of what you're trying to get across here, but I'm, they're impacted, well, woo-hoo. How, what does that mean? I'm wondering if that would make any difference. Just, just a thought.
Go ahead, Eileen.
I think the, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to summarize everything, and through research that I've seen done, and I, again, don't boo me, but from what I understand, and our assessor took a look at this, and they said that property values do go down while construction is going on, but they don't go down significantly afterwards. So, I'm, I'm just saying that's what's been said, and so it, it's not necessarily something we wanna put in here, but we might put significant impacts due to the close proximity of the, the proposed pipeline to these neighborhoods, because...
All right, well, thank you, I just, reading it, thought it would be worth mentioning. Thank you.
We could beef that up, I think.
Hi, Michelle Watson, 21 Whittier Road, and this is back to Dennis's comments about previous letters. I don't ever remember seeing a letter to FERC that addressed neighborhoods. And if it said Whittier, I think we would've all picked up on it. And I will go back and check the website, but I don't ever, you know, I remember water and conservation land, but never residences, residents mentioned. And I took note at the scoping meeting, I think it was the Town and Brookline, stood up and mentioned they were concerned about the residents. There were two letters to FERC this week, among the 400,000 that came, the Town in Brookline, and then a town in Massachusetts, that again, said, "We are concerned for our residents." They didn't say, "We want alternate routes," but they talked about being concerned, and the fight with the outlets, the fight with the cell towers, we all know what it feels like to need to be supported. So it was nice to see it here, but...
And it was purposely put at the top.
It was great, and I appreciate that, but I, I don't think it's been addressed before.
Well, we can, we'll look, we'll look.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yes, Dan?
The only reason why I remember it differently was because their very first route was the power line corridor, and Whittier was at the top of the list on the, right on the power line corridor. So maybe you're right, it wasn't mentioned, but in, in the letter, but I remember it was day one, Whittier Place, over and over again, and it's because the, the backyards led to the power line, but...
But whether it was documented, to identify Whittier, we'll take, go ahead, Jody?
I, and I don't know who can remember the reams and reams of documents we've got. I personally don't remember the neighborhoods being mentioned in writing by the town council's formal comments to FERC prior to this letter. So if that is the case, there is nothing to prevent us from submitting formal comments regarding the other route, the first route that we've been addressing all along. So I would just like to request that we go back and confirm that it hasn't been, if it has been done, great, but I don't think it has, and if it hasn't been, then I think that we should, as a council, address that in writing.
And we can put that into, as a docket on the original.
Correct.
Right. Tom?
Yeah, we didn't name names.
Okay.
We did a head count, we did a property count.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
That's what we did, we did the property count.
How many homes were affected?
That's correct.
That's right.
That's how we approached it.
And there was a separate submission for the properties on Whittier Place.
And because we, this goes back to the conversation over the involvement of notification on the common land, because everybody in Whittier Place owns one sixty-four...
We increased the numbers, it was double, that's right.
That's right, because they were, rightfully so.
So it wasn't named by neighborhood, it was counted as residents affected.
Correct.
That's right. I knew we had done so, I couldn't imagine we hadn't done anything.
I just had one other idea.
Yeah, good, thank you, Tom.
I didn't know if it was worth throwing a bullet point in there about the effect on the outlet malls, as much as many of us were against of it.
Well, that's part of the, I think that's part of the commercial impact, to me, that would be inclusive.
But I mean, if you walk through that parking lot, you often see license plates from Canada.
Yeah.
You don't think that's going to deter people if there's construction?
Well, I'll tell you what, we did have a little bit of discussion about whether we should name the companies along the way, and we really felt that was beyond our reach, that we really couldn't speak for companies, because they will know, they will have their own opinion for, against, or they'll have their own little sidebar discussions with Kinder Morgan, whatever. And we didn't want to put them on the spot, and we also didn't want to highlight and do the work for Kinder Morgan, by the way, here are the companies you should contact.
Yeah, no, I, I don't...
So that would fall under the, the outlet mall would fall under that same philosophy.
And if there is a business in town, I'm, I'm aware of one that is in support of this pipeline, we don't want to highlight it in our written documents.
Correct, right.
So we did have a lengthy discussion about that, and just, and it was a conscious decision to keep names of businesses out of the letter.
It was just an idea?
But no, thank you for asking, Carol.
Good point.
I'm really sorry, but just one more thought.
That's all right, no problem.
Not in this documentation that you've spent so much time on, but in future, would it be too much to ask Kinder Morgan to use an updated map?
Yeah.
I mean, they're still using, the entire outlet mall looks like green space, so there's been recent publications by the federal government and the safety administration which highlight the fact of areas of high consequence not being identified as being hugely impactful in the whole course of identifying safety issues and, and how the pipelines are run, because they're pretty much self-run. So just, just as a thought, I mean, I brought it up, I've submitted my own comment, clearly that's not been addressed, so...
You could always refer to FERC, to the date of your letter, and say, I refer the right honorable FERC to the letter I submitted four months ago, and it still hasn't been addressed.
Corrected.
And I think that would be profound.
I'll send another comment, thank you.
Yep.
Well, make sure you identify your letter.
Yeah.
Whatever serial number they gave the letter, that when you come, you could refer back to, give them that number.
I'll do that, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, Barb Amorall, one Spruce Street, there was discussion about Whittier being affected by the previous route, but it also goes right up Cedar and Beach.
And again, they were, again, terrible, I thought of a body count when I said that, but the residence counts, that was included in that as well.
Right, but if there is going to be further discussion with street names called out and that...
Identification.
And, and as reference to the map, I noticed somewhere that, I forget exactly, but Beach or Arbor or one of the Douglas, one of them is, is named wrong on the map.
Oh, I'll have to take a look at that.
I'll have to go back and look and see, I forget what it was, but, yeah. The map could use some help.
Goes right along with the previous comment. Yeah. And, you know, and part of me, you just made the comment, it's their problem, you know, a part of it has, that they have to have their own due process in correcting their own mistakes, too. It's almost like, if we fix their errors, we're doing the work for them, that's part of that. Go ahead, Kristy.
Hi, good evening, Kristy Radchow, fifty-four Whittier Road. I appreciate all you're doing, I am thrilled to see Whittier Place identified in that response to the Amherst alternate route, thank you very much for doing that. But Whittier has not been called out before, so if you could look back through Whittier and the other neighborhoods, too, I'm not just saying Whittier, but I, specifically identifying, as you're doing in this letter, do it the same way to the original route, and if you could add that information, because we're, we're still on the chopping block no matter what, with the original route, with the alternate route, which leads me to, I just want to share some thoughts with you on, on things that you've said, so I, I understand you don't want to propose an alternate route, I understand that. You don't want to be responsible for anyone else being impacted, and I respect that. But why can't we say to Kinder Morgan, avoid our neighborhoods, avoid our schools, just like Amherst did, now come back to us, what do you have? And I feel like if we don't do that and have something on the table, that this is a very real possibility, that this pipeline is coming no matter what dialogue we've had back and forth, and if we have nothing else on the table by the time we get to that point, aren't we just stuck with what they give us? And I, I can speak for myself and my whole neighborhood, that's a pretty scary feeling right now. So, I don't know if it was Jody that said it, or Tom, you're saying you don't want to discuss alternate routes, but then someone said you've invited Kinder Morgan to come to speak in a public meeting to discuss alternate routes, you have?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Their alternate routes.
Their alternate routes.
Their alternate routes.
For Deb to come up with alternate routes.
Yes.
Yes.
They contacted me directly, and again, as Jody implied, they wanted to meet with the council, and my comment was, no, anything that's going to be done, it's going to be done in public, and this is how you do it, you put in, you know, talk to me about what you're going to do, maybe presenting what they're proposing, but you have to do an agenda request form, just like anybody else. And I'd be happy to approve that, and we can do it in public.
Is that...
Oh, I'm sorry, Eileen.
And didn't it sound like, this was very recently, and didn't it sound like that is what they were planning to do?
They were going to do, but they've now put in a request form for this September meeting, September tenth meeting.
Oh, really?
And that may be, maybe they're not ready for the tenth, they may want to do the twenty-fourth. It did sound like they were going to respond to that idea, but I've heard nothing since.
Okay, so this is a relatively new thing, that you've had this communication with them on it?
Correct, with them last week.
So if they do end up going through the process that we're asking them to, you're willing to discuss their alternate routes?
We're going to listen, from my, from my perspective, we're going to listen to what they have to say, okay? We're going to do the same thing we're doing here, you got this issue, this issue, this issue, this issue, this issue, okay? Address them.
But, yeah, remind you, the timeline's gone, that won't happen. The timeline's gone, and that won't happen. And I don't, I don't see them coming back with an alternative plan now, it's, it's September has begun, their papers are in in October. I mean, think about the process that we lived through so far, we're not getting a new, new plan next week.
Yes, we don't know.
We don't know, I mean, they just bumped down, they just bumped, they just bumped down another scoping meeting, so they're pushing that out to October, so I'm thinking November, beginning of December.
Yeah, but that's, the, the scoping meeting only deals with the environmental impact statement.
No, I understand that, but still...
The roots have already publicly been stated.
I'm sorry, Dan, I apologize.
And, and those impact statements are based on only the roots that have been already publicly stated, nothing new.
But you got resource reports that read TBD throughout most of the documents, you know, they, they still haven't filled it, they still have not filled in the blanks, not just for Merrimack, but for every impacted community.
Right, that's right.
Right.
Did you want to say something, Eileen?
Well, I, I, I'm not sure if I correctly heard Kristy, but I, I don't want you to think that the council looked to them for alternate routes, they wanted to talk to us about it. I, I would not want to pick any other route for them, because if it wasn't going through your neighborhood in the first place, and I gave you as an alternate route, it, it would be a disaster, I would never do that. And so, that's why I like the approach that Nancy has taken on this, that we've taken, and, and I, you know, as Tom had said, we'll just look at it and find out what we see as flaws with it, and we'll answer those flaws, just like option one here.
Correct.
And the way we handled the first part of the, the original piece, that... The hard reality is, is there's no other alternate route. To get into this town, there's no other alternate route, you got to go through an aquifer.
Or a neighborhood.
Or a neighborhood, or a well-hit protection area, or, you know, some other property that they give higher priority to, like the schools and the hospice, or healthcare facilities, or those sorts of things, okay? So from my perspective, there is no other alternate route. Once you get inside town, you can move it six ways from the middle, but getting into town is the issue, and there's no way to do that without having those impacts, it just isn't there. So why should we sit here and play this game with them, that they're going to then turn around and say, well, they talked to us about this, and they seem to like this one better than that one, and blah, 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 so they must be in favor of the pipeline?
Right, right.
So what I'm in favor of...
That is my concern.
Go back south. There's two pipelines in Massachusetts that are getting ready to be built, or to be enlarged, or whatever, and they've got two alternatives that FERC has already asked them to comment on why they aren't choosing them.
Correct.
Okay? Go back south. That's the alternate route.
Oh, I can't, I can't help it.
I can't either.
But politics, as I said, the Department of Energy has deemed Pennsylvania, Marcellus Shales must go east, and it's been the, the objective from day one, and that's why they're not going south. This is a Department of Energy project from the very beginning.
Massachusetts.
Yes, yes, of course, of course. It's all about the Pennsylvania gas field being trucked out. Thank you.
I mean, if they really wanted to truck it out, they could just run a pipeline down to Trenton, they're right there in the ocean, they can get rid of it that way, or they can connect on the Algonquin. But, I mean, privately, and I'll, I'll roll the dice, and I'll say it publicly, Massachusetts doesn't want it, New Hampshire doesn't want it, build it on the state border. Let, let both, let both states share it, because if both states are dead set against it, then in the shortest distance between both points is a straight line, that's about as close to a straight line you're going to get to Drake, it's right on the Mass-Nehan border.
Eileen's trying to decide whether we want to say something.
No.
So, in terms of your first issue, I think not having identified what those residences are, I think can easily be corrected. There can be a submission of, we want to make it clear that on such and such a date, in comment, number, or identification, please refer to those as these neighborhoods.
Thank you.
I mean, I think that's easily, but thank you, Tom, for remembering, because I knew we had, but not directly in terms of name, and I think that's easily correctable.
The, the talk about the alternate route, and the fact that they have been invited to a town council meeting to go through our process of how we want them to do it, is that worth a comment to Mr. Tomasi during this comments period, just like it maybe caught his attention that they're not working in, in good faith on the survey? That you're trying to discuss alternate...
It's just piling on, it's just piling on to the letter, it's a pretty strong letter. I mean, you can only say so much, you don't want to give a ten, a ten-page letter.
Because they won't read it.
Okay.
And as, and as well, it wasn't that we had asked them, you know, we weren't asking them to come to us with alternatives.
Right.
They brought it to Nancy's attention that they'd be interested in that, and she said, you can bring it and tell us what you want here, and we'll hear it.
For public, the public, they have a, Kinder Morgan has every right to have their information made public. They have every right to come in here and let the public know, this is what we're offering Merrimack. They have every right to do that, and I have no right to stop them.
But it was them that approached us.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, absolutely, but it was just under that umbrella, it has to be done in public.
Well, it will be interesting to see if this unfolds, where they actually do, or they don't.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
They've been offered the venue, whether they take advantage, it's up to them.
Who's got the over/under?
Well, that offer was made day one, when they asked to come in and talk to us privately, and we said, no, we'll come in anytime during a public meeting, and we'll be more than happy to talk to you.
Absolutely right, Tom.
Hi, Janine Nodder, nineteen Whittier Road. Bill, you just said Massachusetts doesn't want it, New Hampshire doesn't want it, put it on the state line. That sounds like a good compromise, and I wanted to just point out that you can add that, you could save them money, because there's already a tunnel at exit one, right under exit one in the Royal Kingdom of Nashua, so add that to the letter. Thank you.
Different kind of toll booth, I'm thinking.
Yeah, different, yeah. Yes.
Peter Rosati, fifteen Dunbar. Well, first of all, I, I do want to thank you, I mean, we're kind of off topic anyway, so I'm going to take this a little further off topic. From the, from the first time, a couple, several months ago, that Deb sat there, and someone said that we were all being hysterical, it seems like everybody's kind of on board with this and embraces it, and I, I do want to applaud you for not suggesting an alternate route, because I agree with, with Jody that it does set the town, the whole town, taxpayers and everyone up for liability. If there was to be a catastrophic event and people died, the town would get sued. The, the one thing that I do want to point out is, you can talk about putting it on the town line, but the bottom line is, this is based on need, FERC approves this based on need, and we don't need NED, we don't need it coming up from Pennsylvania, we don't need the entire pipeline. So it's, it's all the moot point.
Right.
There is no need for it, there are two other pipelines that are approved.
That's right.
So the bottom line is, we're talking about all of this money that we've been putting in all this time, has anyone ever considered that we have much more power together, together with all of the seventeen communities that are being affected, together with Massachusetts, together with New York, together with Pennsylvania, to form a class action suit against Kinder Morgan to recoup some of all of this money and time? So I think that's kind of what we want to do, and, and I'm thanking you so much for realizing that we're not hyster, I'm being hysterical now, but realizing that we did not come to you being hysterical, we came to you to point out what we already knew, that we don't need NED. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm more of a question rather than a comment.
Could you restate your name?
I'm sorry, Dennis Farrell, twenty-four Whittier.
Thank you.
At the, at the meeting in Nashua at the Radisson, I had a woman from out in the At the, at the meeting in Nashua at the Radisson, I had a woman from out in the Keene, no, where's, where's the other old pines?
Fitzwilliam Range.
Fitzwilliam, yeah, okay, sitting next to me. She said at that time that Liberty Utilities had not had their deal with Kinder Morgan approved yet.
Correct.
That the New Hampshire Public Utilities Commission sent them away to say, give, you know, we need more justification, whatever.
Correct.
Has that since been closed, do you know?
No.
Is it still open?
Yes.
Okay.
No decisions.
So that would, yeah, so that would kind of maybe indicate there's some skepticism.
We'll see.
We'll see, but, 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 does anybody feel like, does any traction to the fact that there are other existing pipelines, and why do we need this one?
I think what's interesting is, Tom Mahan has attended two meetings recently, one is with Ginta and.
Senator Ayotte.
Senator Ayotte. So they are finally listening, they're eliciting, they've contacted all the towns that are involved, and they're eliciting information, let's have a meeting, tell us about it, and during those meetings, a lot of the coalition members have been giving them that data, have been reinforcing, and a lot of it they already have, but in a small group, they can emphasize, this is what's happening, these are the issues, don't you understand that there's already other ways to get this energy need? So, yeah, and it depends on what day you read information.
Yeah.
I mean, one day, oh, great, this looks good, the next day, darn it.
Yeah.
You know, there's so much going on, and it's so complex, it is hard to keep abreast of all of what's happening.
You can only hope they make the right decision, and the logical decision, so, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Carol DePiero, 10 Cambridge Drive. One question and one thought. I don't know what transpired, that we have to have this letter in by tomorrow, I'm just asking.
This, it's our understanding that if we want to be able to force Kinder Morgan to respond to any comments in the next resource report that they're going to submit, we have to have our comments in by tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
This assures us that they need to respond. Now, we could send it in on October 1st, but they might not need to respond for quite a time in the future. We wanted to have it in so that the next report, they have to address these issues.
The other thing I wanted to bring up in some of the research I've been doing with other states fighting pipelines, and I don't know, it might not work for this letter, but it might be a future thought, is if there's any organic farms, gardens, that has tied things up in other states.
Okay.
He's shaking his head at me.
Yeah, yeah, some people go, oh, okay.
Just this research.
Another reason why they have a survey done, because if that's accurate, then FERC needs to know that there's organic farm that is going to impact. Again, that's one of the advantages of, so that FERC knows the issues that are related to the lands that they're impacting, so. Okay, any further? He was waiting.
By the way, you can use the center aisle.
[laughing].
This isn't church, you're not coming for communion.
Dave Anderson, 52 Whittier Road, I sit all day long, so a little bit of extra exercises, fine with me.
I, I hear you, I understand.
I sat and listened, and first of all, I, I do want to thank and respect all the time that the council's put into this project, I'm sure it's been immeasurable hours and time, and your efforts are appreciated. Most of the comments that I was thinking about sitting here reading this letter are, have already been reflected, so maybe to kind of bring things back to the actual letter itself, I wanted to highlight a point that someone else brought up earlier, that on point two, we do mention vaguely about the impact, and then on point four, we specifically cite the types of impacts, maybe anecdotal here, but maybe we could add a bullet point specifically, just listing the general impacts that we see, not specific to any one item, so we don't marginalize one versus the other, just say like, well, as far as, you know, residential areas, here they are, as far as commercial areas, here they are, as far as the hospice, here it is, and then we see these potentials for impacts to the areas identified above in general, without stating one more than the other. Maybe just.
So you're suggesting that we consolidate those kind of things in one paragraph?
Consolidate the statement about the impact as one item, and list them implicitly, individually, and then have a summary of impacts perhaps as a.
Okay, so it's a format issue more than content?
Yeah, that way, I just don't want it to look like we're paying any more attention to one versus the other, so if we just list the properties as they are, and then just state that we're concerned about the impacts, regardless of property type, then I think you avoid that.
Okay.
Thanks.
I guess my reaction is six of one half does another, but, no, I appreciate your comment, I just. Yeah. Okay. People take a few minutes to think, yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, no more comments?
Hi, Thomas Cissato, 3 Fields Farm Road. Where we would be impacted on the, the second and third option of the Amherst alternative, and it seems like this letter focuses, rightly so, on option one, but it doesn't seem to talk.
No, this is the alternative.
Well, there's three options to the alternative.
Right, there were three alternatives, and the consensus at the meetings in Amherst were that two and three weren't viable.
Right.
They were too expensive.
So it's option one.
And so they focused on option one, and that's what they've been pushing and pressing on since that time.
Okay.
Right, it formally submitted, which is the point.
Options two and three might be on the map, but they're there because they proposed them, and they have to, they may have to, they may want to include them, but they'll put the, you know, hey, it's too expensive, it goes way over here and up around there, and I know it impacts you in a funny way in, in one instance, the way they bring it back in, but they aren't giving either one of those any kind of, any kind of serious consideration at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is related to the one that's actually been submitted to FERC.
However, given their duplicity on other things, watch it.
Okay.
It's true.
Thank you.
It's true.
Okay, should I move fast? Okay, I don't see anyone else, okay, I'm ready for motions.
I want to submit the letter.
As amended.
For docket P 1432, 22, resource reports, and authorize the town manager to sign with the help of the council, and to ensure that copies go to our congressional and state delegations.
Seconded.
And would that be with the corrections we discussed? Adding Withersfield, Castleton?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any discussion about the motion? Yes.
Thank you, I just wanted to thank everybody that came out tonight, because there's an awful lot of information, and everybody putting their heads together and giving us ideas, there are things that not everyone can think of, so I'm, I know we're all very appreciative of you coming and giving us your input, and if we don't take something that you've said, or a suggestion that you've given us, it's not that we don't think it has value right now, this letter, time is of the essence, and we have until tomorrow, and, and how we came up with that is, our attorneys basically have been watching the timeline and the different filings, and we're not positive, because who, there's no black and white dates on any of this, I mean, it's, to me, it's just absurd that this whole process operates this way, it's just because no one else would get away with this if they were running a business, or a town, or a school district, but we're taking our best guess at timelines and deadlines, and we're pretty confident that tomorrow is a deadline, a very important deadline, in order to get answers at the next resource report. So because time is of the essence, I don't think there's enough time for us to really rework this a lot, so don't think that we're discounting your opinions, or that they don't matter, or they're not important to us, but I just don't think we have enough time to incorporate all the changes that have been suggested tonight, but thank you for coming.
Well said. Okay, Tom?
Well, I also want to add on to that, it's not just time, but it's the fact that we're trying to get these points on the docket, so that those points have to be referred to, and so, we have a list of points, a list of options, a list of ideas that are being put forth, that Kinder Morgan is going to have to address and respond to, so if we don't dot the T and cross the I, or vice versa, then, then that's okay, they still have to comment on it, right? So, there's, there's an urgency, but there's also a fact that we want to get something in there that they will respond to, and these, these points do allow us to get more information and force them to, in fact, review and understand this, the route better than they do today.
Right. Okay, I'll set about, all those in favor of the motion, Tom Mahan, and it was Bill Boyd, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, seven zero zero. Okay, I think that completes our mission for this evening. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming and voicing your opinions and your comments.
These are more on your agenda.
I do, oh, thank you, comments from the press. You can tell, see, they're in a hurry too. Comments from the public, any others? Boy, you've had enough time. Comments from the council. Oh, Tom?
I sent you all three documents from the National Regional Planning Commission, with my comments on the items that they're, they're meeting on the ninth, the, their energy facilities task force or committee, or whatever it is, plus the, plus the commissioners to go through a, a white paper and a resolution. And, you know, the resolution is three pages, it is so diffuse and so confusing, it carries no weight at all, in my opinion, and it's just, I'm debating whether I'm even going to go. I probably will, but.
To express your frustration.
It's, it's crazy, I mean, it's crazy, and the, it's all over the place. The, the white paper itself is no better than a sixth grader's, what I did for the summer paper, that they do the first day of school. That's exactly, you know, when I read it.
So how do you really feel?
Yeah.
Oh, you're going, all right.
So, just, you know, it, it, there's a meeting on the ninth to go over that, there's a meeting on the 16th to act on it by the commission, to make a submission to FERC with regard to the National Regional Planning Commission's position on the pipeline property. So, that's it. I just wanted to.
Thank you.
Make you generally aware of, of that other thing that's going on.
I'm going to track you.
So many things.
I want to, I'm going to track you.
How are you going to track me?
Video tape you.
Okay, any other comments? The other comment I want to make again is to thank Eileen again, who continues to spare head the whole Kinder Morgan and organizing, and keeps us in check, like, how many times a day do we talk, Eileen? I mean, we don't talk one day, we miss each other, but anyway, so I just want to publicly thank her.
There were only 35 emails between Thursday of last week and, and yesterday, on this whole thing.
But let's not, let's make a vote not to have any emails until after Labor Day, is that okay? Okay, let's give ourselves a break. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Bill Boyd, Jody Valencourt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Seven zero zero. Thank you.